Detailed sheet.
Yeah.
And you can put it in with the rest of your information. And I think Stephanie, with other departments as we move forward, you're gonna essentially do the same thing, have them here as we get ready for each night.
Good evening, Your Honor, counsel. Thanks for having me. As I go through this, we're gonna be talking a lot of summaries and you've been giving the details. So if you have any questions about the details or if you have any questions at any time, feel free to ask, but this whole presentation's gonna be more on the highlights of the budget and kinda what we do with the money and more in overall terms. And I'm gonna go into great detail about how the Police Department functions, especially we have a lot of new council members and just so you completely understand kinda how the staff's set up, how the squads are set up. So we'll go ahead and get started here. Every year, we kinda try to find a fitting picture or a fitting theme for the budget process and those are our four active reserves. We have five and as a matter of fact, we're testing a couple more tomorrow, but those reserves are actually the two guys on the end, Mr. Good and Mr. Butler, are completely certified and on the weekends, they come in and get a squad car and go hit the streets to help our guys out. So when we talk about funding and personnel and it's making up eighty percent of our budget, we really have used this program to try to augment what we're doing down there from a support staff. And I just wanted to say thanks for those folks. I mean, they put in a lot of hours down there and they do it for a dollar a year and they're wonderful, wonderful people to come in and do what they do, so a special thanks to them. So we'll get started. So in the overview, we're gonna talk about our overall budget, how do we utilize our staffing levels or the personnel at the Police Department, police operations. We'll talk about our capital items or our capital expenses that we need to keep the Police Department and our equipment modern. The POP unit accomplishments, again, what did we do with that additional staff and how are they doing? So we'll have some nice comparisons there and then futuristically, some costs that we're gonna have to consider as we move forward. So the highlights, our overall police budget is six point two-five million. Patrol operations make up four point four-eight million of that. Police administration is eight hundred and forty-four thousand. The DESCOM annual contribution, and we'll make some annual comparisons as we go through that, but that's up about seven thousand dollars. And what that is, is they break that down with the entities involved, in other words, by population. So we're the biggest user of DESCOM, so it costs us the most amount of money. And then they break it down for the county the same way, for West Burlington the same way, and right on down the line. So I think his overall budget this year was like one point oh-one or one point one in that neighborhood.
Would you like to kinda talk about what DESCOM is and how they operate, where they're located and what's going on with that, too?
Yeah, currently, DESCOM, I think, believe it or not, this is their fourth year, but we formed its own separate legal entity. The police dispatchers used to be part of the Burlington Police Department and the Police Department's budget and they fell under our supervision. Well, as things moved along, we thought it was important to create a different entity so maybe someday we could start to do some consolidation of PSAPS. And that was never gonna happen as long as we were in charge of the dispatch center. And plus, it's something that they've been doing all over the state, so we formed DESCOM, its own separate legal entity, and it functions as such. So with that, they have, I believe, twelve dispatchers down there now and we have a full-time supervisor that runs that, Johnny Platt is his name. They're currently housed at the Burlington Police Department, but with our move, they're gonna transfer out to the hospital. They're downstairs and I believe it was the Black Hawk Room at one time. It's kinda if you've ever been downstairs to the PT part or some of the workout rooms, that's where you'll find them is down there. So they should be up and operational. I think their cut-over date is around February fourteenth, so a couple weeks prior to that, they'll be putting in a lot of time and then they'll actually cut it over on the fourteenth. And as part of that process, our nine-one-one calls will be routed to Lee County. Anytime we would have a failure in our fiber, it automatically gets routed to Lee County. So they've agreed to take these nine-one-one calls and tell the new centers up and running, but actually, that cut-over time should be fairly short. I mean, within two or three hours, we should be having those calls coming back to us. As far as the dispatching side of it, the radio side of it, it's really not that complicated. I mean, with a laptop computer and access to the internet, we could actually dispatch calls. So they're gonna add a fourth console. They currently have three, so we're gonna take one of those consoles out to the hospital with all the radio equipment, get it up and running, make sure it's functioning, and then we'll do the cut-over. So we know that we have two more stations here that are up and running and one out there, at least for our dispatching portion of it. So that's all coming and it's coming fairly rapidly, so. And if you ever want any more information on DESCOM or how that functions, I mean, throw me an email or something and I can get with the director, Johnny Platt or Chief Trexel could do the same thing and have me come in here and give you a presentation on exactly what they do. But they basically handle all emergency communications for the county, police, fire, medical, EMT, the whole work, so. But that's what we pay them annually to do that for us. Animal control's about a hundred and twenty thousand. The task force, that expenditure of a hundred and nine thousand, and I'll get into this in greater detail, but that's three detectives up there from, we have ours that we have to pay for and then we have Des Moines County detective and a West Burlington detective, but that's our portion. That's what it costs us to run the task force. And then parking enforcement at forty-four-nine. That might be a little bit hard for you to read, but this is gonna be really important. As we present this, we're gonna present this as a balanced budget and then when we talk about the staffing proposal and the staffing plan that was put in place last year as part of a three-year plan, we're gonna do that when this presentation is done, so I'm trying to keep that from confusing anybody. We're gonna put this out there as forty-five officers and this is a balanced budget. And then we'll talk about the staffing plan or the staffing proposal after we're done with this.
Thank you, sir.
So in FY seventeen, there were a total of forty-three sworn officers with ten command officers and two of those are supplied through the COPS grant and then four reserves, one part-time, and you can read that. So then when we got down here to FY nineteen as part of the staffing proposal, we added two people, or that's what I keep saying, we added two people. Well, we added two people from the forty-three we had, but when I was putting together this presentation and digging through some notes, I came across some staff meeting notes from two thousand and two, fifteen years ago. Guess how many sworn policemen we had at the Burlington Police Department fifteen years ago? Forty-five. Forty-five sworn officers and they responded to about twenty-nine thousand calls for service. And with those forty-three officers up there, they responded to about thirty-seven thousand calls for service. So when we talk about this, keep in mind, it took us fifteen years, fifteen years to get back to forty-five. So currently, then we break it down and this is chart. It's a little bit easier to see or to read than in the narrative form. And that's our parking enforcement, that's a part-time position. Animal control's a part-time position. We have an evidence technician's part-time and that evidence tech takes in the evidence, processes the evidence. Any requests we get for DVDs, CDs, or that kinda evidence, they take care of that, they take care of the trips to the lab. It's unbelievable what they get accomplished in twenty-eight hours a week that one of our full-time detectives don't have to do.
Wow.
I mean, it's fantastic. It is a fantastic position for the Police Department. And I'd just like to thank Mr. Frenault. He understood when we talked about this position and its importance and made sure that we got that position back as well. There's our reserves, the numbers are growing. I mean, the plan of five years ago was set up for ten reserves. That's a difficult number to get to and to stay at. You know, realistically, that six to eight, ten would be great, but keep that in mind. I mean, we had one full-time reserve that was completely trained, ready for the streets and had some things come up in his life and just couldn't do it anymore. And you gotta remember, these are volunteers and it takes a couple years to get them to that level, but you know, if something comes up, it comes up and we support that. You know, we're just thanking for what they do, so.
Right.
We just ask for your patience there to trying to get to that number to ten. That's quite an undertaking, to say the least, so. It's been a great program and it's going really, really well. And then the COPS grant, we'll get into this in more detail, but that's something you really need to be aware of, 'cause as we get an extension, which I'm sure we will because we will qualify, one of the qualifiers is training for officers, so when you sign up for the grant, if you don't have officers to fill the position, the grant starts in October. Well, we didn't train till March, so that six-month extension, I can't speak for the government, there'd be no reason we wouldn't be granted that extension and that will carry you through March of nineteen. But this is, we're talking about the budget year, fiscal year of nineteen. So, and that's, and I'll break all that down for you so you know how much funding we're talking about and how much money that that's. And just real quickly before I go on about the COPS grant is this is our second grant. I think our first one expired in like twenty-twelve or twenty-thirteen and you pretty much have to sit out a cycle. They don't tell you that in the instructions, but that's kinda what it took us. We almost set out one full cycle before we got another grant, but this is actually our second COPS grant that we're under right now.
What is a full cycle, chief?
Three years. It's a three-year cycle. I mean, I would encourage you to apply. I mean, when this expires, we need to apply. You can't, we're not out anything, it doesn't cost anything to apply, but I just kinda, I've kinda noticed, not only our experience, but other departments our size, that experience, it's almost like it's cyclic that way, but that all depends on funding, too, on how much money they have.
Do they cover a hundred percent?
No, it's seventy-five percent for three years.
Twenty-five percent.
Yep. So for those that don't know, this is kind of important. We have ten command officers and that's how they break down with the chief, two majors, three lieutenants, four sergeants. So we have a major of patrol and investigative operations, that's Major Kramer. So he takes care of everything in the patrol division and everything in investigations. That's his responsibility to take care of those two divisions. And Major Grimshaw takes care of all the administrative services and trainings, all of our community outreach programs, the SRO programs, all of the training, FTO training to a point. Some of that is also Major Kramer's, but that's what he takes care of in the organization. We run twelve-hour shifts. We found, I think we started twelve-hour shifts in nineteen ninety-four or nineteen ninety-five and unequivocally, that's how we can keep and put the most people on the street at a time. And it's a shift that's very attractive in law enforcement now and when it comes to recruiting and retention, that's one of the first questions you get asked, what kinda shift do you work? Do you work twelve-hour shifts? I mean, they would rather come in and rightfully so, work some additional hours to have to work less days and then when we look at the hypervigilance cycle that officers go through, these highs and lows, highs and lows, the more time in between there we can get, the better reset they can have, so it really works for us. So we have a total of four squads then and two of those are day shift squad and two are night shift squad. The A and B is seven A to seven P and the C and D is seven P to seven A. And so there's a lieutenant on each one of those shifts. So a lieutenant is responsible for A and B, we'll say. And if A is assigned six officers and B is assigned six officers, they each have a sergeant, so he's responsible for about fourteen personnel. And that's the same for days and for nights. So then we'll have a lieutenant that's in charge of all the investigative services as well. The POP unit, most of the time, they work a flexible ten-hours shift, so they work a little bit of the day shift and a little bit of the night shift. So their supervision is basically who's ever on duty at the time. They fall under the night shift or the night commands responsibility, but with that said, they work a flexible shift, so sometimes they're actually in here in the daytime working, so. And the lieutenant in CID, and it talks about four detectives there, that was all part of the staffing plan that we're gonna talk about and our fourth detective, believe it or not, this is really, really good news, is gonna start Wednesday. We're gonna get him back to investigations Wednesday and we talked about this in detail at this time last year. So again, that's what kinda time it takes to get people trained and on the streets and to get going.
That'd be nice to have that fourth detective.
Yes, it's gonna be really, really, really nice. And so as I said, the task force is made up of a Burlington officer, a county officer and a West Burlington officer. And then we have two full-time SROs. And the high school position is funded a hundred percent and the middle school's forty-five and you kinda ask, well, what's the difference? Across the state, you're gonna see real inconsistencies in pay, but what's real consistent is about seventy-five percent overall. And so that's kinda where we ended up, really close to that seventy-five percent mark and they pay wages and benefits for those nine months that they're at the school. And then obviously, when they're not at the school, they're back on patrol and then we're taking care of it, so. It's really been a fantastic agreement with the school and it's really worked well.
Yeah, it has. Yeah, it has.
Really, really has worked well. And what it does for the guys on the streets is those SROs handle everything in the schools and so you're not sending radio cars out there eight or ten times a day, which that's what we'd be doing. So it's unbelievable, the call load and the stress is taken off the guys on the streets, so.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask how many calls SROs take.
Yeah, it'll be in the annual report, but it's hundreds.
Okay.
It's hundreds.
I was just gonna throw in there also the relationship that they're building up with a lot of the kids, too, that I see where they come up to, you know, the police officers, hey, you know, they're talking to us like, man, they're buddies, you know, they're better than I do. So I mean, I love to see that, I like that aspect of it as well.
Yeah, thank you. That is an important part of the program. And then you're real familiar with the K-9 unit that we got and the officer that takes care of that K-9. He was in the POP unit, but he's gonna be assigned back to the night shift and the reason kinda, the reason for that change is the K-9'll be more effective, actually assigned to a patrol shift, doing patrol duties, so that's just gonna work out better for everybody and when's that take? That's coming up, major?
It's coming up.
Okay, so that just got started underway with that change, so.
All right.
And that's a little bit hard to read, it's hard to get it all, but that kinda just really starts to break it down for you, what we just talked about and how it kinda flows down. I mean, there's Major Grimshaw and the things we talked about that he was in charge of and then for Major Kramer, it kinda flows down to your lieutenants, your sergeants and the officers. But these flow charts are really, really important for us to keep track of personnel and where they're at and when we reassign personnel to make sure that we know exactly where everybody's at at all times. Flow charts or organizational charts are really important for what we do down there. So we'll talk about total gross general fund expenditures and then obviously, you can see it, it just kinda goes up over time and what really drives that for the most part is personnel, whether it's the wage increases, it's the benefit, the costing, benefits. And I'll break that down, I will break those costs down to you here exactly how that number got to be six point two-four-eight versus six point oh-seven-four. So overall, the personnel has increased one hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. And I think the union raises this year two point two-five and non-union, like they talked about last week, some were at midpoint, so it's very similar to that raise and then the ones that are below midpoint would get more of a raise, but overall, that's where that comes from. Plus included in there, and I know the city manager talked about this in his overview, was about a three-quarter percent increase in Iowa police and fire. And that overall, I think, was one fourteen-ish. I mean, for both departments.
The total was about a hundred thousand for that and I-PERS in the general fund. I don't really remember how much was four-eleven and how much was that.
So that's part of that personnel increase as well. And DESCOM, and again, their wages went up, I think he said his wages were three percent or two point seven-five, so that's the biggest part of that increase. The K-9, and what you'll see when we go through this is the K-9 overtime, they're entitled to eight hours overtime of pay period for taking care of the dog when they're not on duty. That's part of the Fair Labor Standard Act. But when we put the program together and met with the foundation, that was the biggest cost driver of that program. So we raised enough money to keep that program with the overtime for five years and this is year two of that. So the foundation pays for all that overtime and that is reimbursed, I think you bill us every six months, I believe. And so we write a check back to the City of Burlington through the foundation to cover that K-9 overtime.
That's sweet.
Training, it's up just a little bit from what it normally is, the ILA costs are going up. And something that I talked to the city manager about that I think is extremely important that we get started in is what we call a LexiPol program. You can kinda look about it and read about it and learn about it.
Can you give us that name again?
It's LexiPol, it's L-E-X-I-P-O-L. And what they do is they come in and actually take a look at your current policies, procedures, rules and regulations and we start to break that down and they're very familiar, not only for state rules and regulations, but nationwide. And they provide this service to literally hundreds of departments where they actually come in and help you draft the most modern policies there are. And so when it comes to civil liability, failure to train issues, those are huge hurdles for law enforcement across the country. And so I just felt it was really important to introduce it into the budget and try to move forward with this annually. And one of the biggest parts of this program is they'll include daily training on policies. We have a program now where we can insert policies into that training, but what they can do, and they can do it every day, is break those policies down into sections and then they, also with this program, it'll keep track of what policies you've reviewed, who reviewed them, what time they reviewed them. Because like I said, in our industry, failure to train is a huge liability for us and so trying to stay on top of the policy portion of what we do is difficult. And as I talk to chiefs across the state in conferences, I'd say that list is very extensive for state agencies that are using LexiPol. And it's been around a long time. I don't know if you've heard of Gordon Graham and his risk management strategies, but he's all part of LexiPol as well. And then they give out daily webinars with Gordon Graham, so.
So this increase doesn't include us enrolling in that program?
What's that?
This doesn't include?
Yeah, that would include. Now, that doesn't make up all the cost. I mean, the cost of this training budget is two thousand dollars higher than it was last year.
Yep. What's it cost to get into that program, the LexiPol?
I think they quoted us fourteen, fifteen? Fourteen or fifteen thousand, but with that said, I'm really encouraged, I got ahold of what's called ICAP and it's another organization that we're part of. It's an international organization and they're right in the middle of brokering or making a deal with LexiPol. And I talked to LexiPol about it and it confirmed that and so if that goes through, we're gonna get that at a substantially discounted price.
Is that gonna be annual, chief?
So, yeah, it'd be annual. It doesn't have to be, but that's sure my recommendation, at least for the first three, four, five years until everybody in the organization's got a real handle on what they're doing and you could reevaluate it then, but it does not have to be annually. It can be a one-time expense, get things up to date and go from there, so. That's something, just something to consider. I think it's something that'd be really important for the organization, but I wanted to make everybody on this council aware that it's an addition to what we've done.
And we built that into the budget and to me, it's, from what he's presented, it makes an awful lot of sense to, that we spend the money to do this.
Well, just from the litigation side alone, it could be saving yourself potentially.
Millions.
Yeah. When was the last time we had that done?
Actually, we continually do it, but...
When was the last time we had a third-party organization do it?
I don't think we've ever had it done, ever to my knowledge. And the higher the liability is in policies are the ones that always flash up to the top for administrators like pursuit policies, use of force policies. And so those are fairly easy to keep up to date, but what happens is when the book is this thick, it's those ones you don't see every day that could really slip up on you that you didn't want to have happen, so. I mean, I just think over the course of time, and if you're ever thinking about an accreditation process for the organization or, I mean, LexiPol would be a very, very large part of that as well, so. I mean, I just think futuristically, it's the way to go. I really do.
It is.
GSTB, that's our Governor Traffic Safety Bureau grant that we get every year and it, whoops, it increased, that thing really took off, Eric. It increased seven hundred dollars this year. Then I'll have a slide that'll show you exactly how much that figure is, but again, that traffic safety program, what we use that for is a hundred percent traffic enforcement. I mean, when you've got four or five guys answering radio calls, it doesn't leave a lot of time to go out and do proactive traffic enforcement. So with the grant dollars like school zones, drunk driving enforcement, those kinda things, they reimburse that a hundred percent and that went up a little bit this year for us, so that's a good thing. Animal control, we budgeted a higher number in there this year. We just see a trend that those animal medical costs are going up. When we take those dogs, cats into the pound, we pay for to keep them there or not to keep them there. And so those are expenses either way and we just, I've seen this trending up and up and up and rather than go over budget, I think it's important that we recognize that.
Yeah, I did, that's something that we do need to recognize. I was gonna take a cat to the Humane Society this week and it's not my cat, it's my daughter's. But anyways, but yeah, they said I couldn't take it, I had to call back. The only people that were taking animals were at Lee County because of a respiratory thing with the animals. I'd never heard of that before.
Yeah, we'll have that and sometimes we get like a parvo breakout amongst dogs and they can't take dogs, so yeah, it's a, there's a lot of animals that go through there, yeah.
You said that's the increase. What's the real cost right now for that?
For animal control? I think I have.
Medical side?
I'll have it here.
Okay.
And it would be, I can get you the code number for that in the detail. So it'll be twelve oh-eight, five nineteen. So here's a comparison of personnel expenses, so we'll kinda break this down into our different categories. Instead of just giving you one number, you can kinda understand where it comes from. So administration is up twenty thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. The patrol division's a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Animal control is a thousand, just a little over a thousand dollars. The task force increase, parking, and again, this all goes back to personnel and those expenses in personnel and there's your total numbers at the bottom. Makes up a big part of our budget, it's a major, major expense for us. So full-time overtime, we talk a lot about this with Mr. Frenault and I keep promising him or telling him that we can hit this target and he's like, you don't ever hit the target. And I'm like, well, I think that we're gonna hit this target and I really mean that. And he said, well, already this year, you're at seventy thousand dollars, how are you gonna hit that target? And I said, well, all these people that have been at the academy are now assigned to a squad and we have, our squads are full of six people on a squad. And barring any major breakout of illness or injuries, if you have six people on a squad, the chance of overtime would be very, very, very rare because we only allow one person to be gone on vacation at a time and if we have four people working, we don't hire overtime. So overtime in our organization, you're always gonna have that probably, our baseline is around forty-five or forty-six thousand dollars. I mean, because out of that, you have court pay, if they go to court, we're required to pay them two hours overtime in court pay. We have in-service training, you have other training throughout the year, just before the end of the year, you can count on that as kinda being a base number. And the rest of the overtime comes from what I just said, if you're staffing a squad of five guys, you're gonna have a lot of overtime. There's no getting around it, 'cause one guy'll be gone, that puts you down to four and then if you have a guy on a Kelly Day and they get ten Kelly Days a year...
Can you explain what a Kelly Day is?
Yeah, Kelly Day is actually a payback day. We gotta really go back in time to explain this, but back in the early eighties, we went to a six-and-three, or I mean, the late eighties, early nineties, we went to a six-and-three schedule. And when they went to a six-and-three schedule, they started working two thousand and three to two thousand and eight hours a year approximately, instead of two thousand and eighty. So then eventually, once we move into this twelve-hour schedule, ten, twelve, thirteen years later, they still work two thousand and two to two thousand and six hours a year versus two thousand and eighty. So that means basically, we owe them eighty hours a year. And so how we do that is, is they get one day a month for ten months. So we don't allow one in February, that's in-service training, and we don't allow one in June because that's steamboat days. We don't allow any time off in that ten days, well, this year it'll be a lot shorter, of steamboat days. So that's where, when we, what'll happen to us, we call it a KV, it's a Kelly Vacation Day. In other words, one patrolman's on vacation and Kelly Days... In other words, one patrolman's on vacation, and Kelly Days are assigned. That's up to us, and we assign those out. But what we can't control, other than three days' notice, is a vacation day. So somebody's three days in advance puts in for a vacation day, somebody's already on a Kelly Day. If you, if you have a five-man squad, that puts you at three officers. So we're going to have to hire 12 hours overtime. And that's why I have preached and preached and preached, to maintain staffing levels, we need six on a squad. Seven is a lot better, but we need six. We really, truly do. And now, and those are all contractual things, so we're bound to that contract. We're in, what, year two?
Is it two?
I think we'll be starting year two, right?
We'll be starting year three.
Okay, and, okay. So we're kind of bound by that, and we worked really, really hard at negotiations on those Kelly Days. We really did. And kind of what was happening all at the same time was this insurance and having to pay for insurance. They had never been exposed to that. And trying to make sure this worked in arbitration, there was just no way we were going to get the Kelly Days back. You pay for insurance. It was, that's going to have to be something that you're just going to have to nip away at over time, or if that's what you choose to do or don't choose to do. But that's the schedule, and that's what they work. So that's what a Kelly Day means. And actually, that term came out of the fire industry, I believe, I'm pretty sure. So there's our budget at overtime. For FY19, it'll be $95,000, and I think we can hit it.
Just don't break it.
Just don't break it. Sorry about that, I've got another slide ahead. And this is just a graph showing you the same thing. Kind of where we've been and where we're going. And I really think that's going to come out right in there. So traffic safety funding, this is back to that GTSB, the Governor Traffic Safety Bureau. And this is the funding that we've received over the years. So that's 15, 16, then 16, 17. And like I said, we're creeping back up again this year, which is a good thing. This is money that there's no match to it. I mean, we just fill out an application. If they accept our application...
Just give it to you.
They give us the money. And there are certain criteria we have to hit with educational programs, public service announcements, but that's okay. It's a real benefit to what we try to do when it comes to traffic enforcement. Security guard overtime, because you're going to see this, and again, that number, if we reach that number, it's 100% reimbursed. So what this means is, and I, I don't know if it'll be quite this high this year, because I'm not sure what's going to happen with steamboat days. Because steamboat days is a big driver of this. They reimburse us 100% of our overtime while we're down there. Football games, the schools, they reimburse us 100% of our overtime when we have officers there. So that's what that means. If we're going to go provide overtime for somebody, they're going to reimburse it 100%. It's kind of a pass-through account, I'd call it, but...
Yeah, and it's an area that I wasn't concerned about seeing us bring the budgeted number down. It's designed to be budget-neutral, and I, it's, we're better to make sure that we've budgeted for the higher, higher end of where we could potentially see that reimbursement.
Well, and our rate's going to go up this year, too. We're going to reevaluate that rate, so.
Reanswer, sales team boat days goes this year.
We could get pretty close to that. So our patrol capital items, and we'll kind of break this down for you. And this is something, when we get towards the end of the program, that is going to be really important, something to consider in the future. But this is what we got budgeted for this year. Normally, three squad cars will take care of what we do, but as we add officers, we have to add equipment. We have to keep this, what we really want to do is keep these squad cars on a five-year rotation. Because at the end of five years, I mean, if they got 100, 120,000, they go, well, that's not too many miles. Well, after five years, the squad car's in pretty tough shape. I mean, they sit there and they run, maybe not 24/7, but, you know, that, those miles don't count for idle time.
They run hard, man. They run hard.
They do. But where we're kind of getting ahead of the game, when they, you remember when the Crown Vics phased out and they started offering the Tauruses and Explorers? Well, none of our equipment would transfer. So we were having to buy everything: lights, sirens, control boxes, partitions, computer mounts, everything. Well, not now. Now we're to the point that this number used to be about $12,000, because we can transfer a ton of this stuff now. I mean, we need to keep our in-car camera, and you'll see that, that up to date, but the consoles, molded seats, partitions, the gun locks, and installation. We're going to raise that a percentage each year for the next five years, that's $6,000, but that's probably half of what it's been in the past, to outfit a car. So that's, that's going to be really beneficial. And then I'm going to recommend that every other year, our CID fleet is really getting behind. I mean, with the tough times in the budget, and they're still tough times, getting behind. And we just, we've got to have dependable cars to get around town. So my recommendation is going to be replace one every other year. And I think if you do that, that you'll be able to get the fleet up to date and keep the fleet up to date for the detectives. I mean, I think we got, I didn't bring my post-it note, but we got like some '05s, '06, '07s, and we got a couple newer ones, too, but some of those cars have been around a long time. And then this will break it down even just a little bit further into our operating equipment. Tasers were on a, that would have been a six in the years past, to keep those on a five-year rotation. And computers, that's up one because the cars are up one. PBTs are pretty much the same, radar is the same, but body worn cameras are up two as well. We were doing six a year, and now we're going to have to, as we employ more officers, you have to keep their equipment up to date. I mean, without good equipment, they're going to...
What's the life of the tasers?
Well, we want to keep them on a five-year rotation as well. I mean, that's our goal.
So, so what are we doing with the, with the old tasers?
We trade them in.
They don't have as much juice.
We trade them in. Why you want one?
We'll talk about it after the meeting.
We can work out a trade price for you.
Do we, do we get money for those when we trade them in?
Yeah, absolutely.
Or credit of some sort?
Yeah, yep. And they have lease programs as well, and we've looked into the lease programs. And if you were starting a new program with taser, let's say your department didn't have tasers, and you needed to outfit everybody, I think that lease program would be the way to go. But right now, it's not for us. I mean, the lease programs for our department would be about $15,000 a year. So...
For everything?
Yeah, well, 15 grand a year, and they'll come in and they, they make sure you have serviceable tasers. I'm not saying they're going to give everybody a brand-new one, but if you have a problem with the taser, they automatically replace it. Well, I can do it far less than that, because our tasers, we don't really have a problem with them. They last, and they work, and at the end of their five-year cycle, when we replace them, I mean, it seems to me, we're doing it for about half.
How do you, how do you find out that a taser's not quite doing what it should?
Well, they test them.
The guy doesn't shake as much.
Pull the trigger and it doesn't go.
No, they, yeah, they test them every day. They cycle them for a five-cycle test every day, and that's documented. Absolutely.
Chief, question.
Yeah.
Your department, does every officer have their own individual taser, and they swap out batteries? Or do you guys have, say, a dozen or 20 tasers that officers come in and check out?
No, they all have their own. We started that way.
Okay.
But over the course of time, we got to the point that everybody has all of their own equipment. They have their own body worn camera. We did that through grants. They have their own walkie-talkies. They have their own gun, obviously, but their own OC, their own everything. So now we'll talk about the revenues a little bit. Pretty much flat, it looks like, between 18 and 19, of what the police department brings in in revenues. And I think about, and Jim will know for sure, but around 800,000 of this is a transfer from lost. Is that correct? It's got to be pretty close.
Close.
And the rest of that is made up by all of our reimbursables, like we talked about, our traffic safety, our security guard overtime.
A transfer?
Yeah, from lost, like our capital equipments paid for with lost.
I got you, I got you.
And part of that originally, when they voted to lost in, was to finance officers or to supply officers to the department.
So out of our patrol division, out of, from lost, we transfer an amount that's equal to one-fifth of the personnel cost of our patrol division. And it was originally, I think, eight.
Yeah, I think so, and it was originally talked about, you're close.
But, but, and it was basically, we've let the formula go as we've expanded the force to cover one-fifth of it. But, yeah, we cover a fifth of the, of the cost there, plus the full amount, as he shows the CIP items. The full amount of the CIP, we, his, all of his capital equipment purchases occur, they're funded with local option sales tax, but we transfer from local option sales tax to the general fund to cover them. And I hate using this, this, I'm just trying to find the amount that we transfer over. I'm up into fire control, because I can't do that and talk. Hmm, is it $1,158, or no? I'm looking in the wrong spot. I'm still in fire.
Let's ask somebody that can look at it and talk at the same time, Steph.
Expanse transfers. It's $1,005,000 for the two total between them.
Okay. Just trying to explain a little bit where those revenues come from. So here, we'll kind of get into the details of the cops grant funding. I know Matt asked about the percentage that's funded. So it's a, it's a three-year program for two officers, and it pays for 75%, and the city picks up 25. So when you divide that out, it's approximately $83,333 a year that's contributed back to the, the general fund. So, and again, I kind of talked a little bit about, in and in March of 19, if it's granted, and like I said, I have no reason to believe that, that it wouldn't be granted. I know we've been through the process before, and it just hasn't been a problem. So how do we utilize that funding, or what are we doing with that funding? Well, when we wrote up the program, we wrote it up to put together a POP unit. And then what was this POP unit going to do? And so it talks a little bit in this slide about our community involvement and community support, but that's really not even half of what they do. A big portion of what they're assigned to do is to target high-crime areas and to target those criminals in those high-crime areas, and to do that very directed. I mean, not randomly, but directed. Hey, we got some MRI, what we call most recent information, and we take that coupled with past intelligence that we've had, and leads us to believe reasonably that this person, this house, this block, this date, this time, here's the problem we think we're going to have. And so we can take and concentrate our effort there. And here in a minute, I'll show you some stats and show you the difference that can make when two people have an opportunity to take that intelligence information and direct their patrols. But with that, we think it's really important to show the community what we're doing with the engagement or the involvement part of it. And I'm not going to read that to you, you can read. But something else that Major Kramer and I discussed at length is, is we have to build partnerships with not only state agencies, local agencies, but our federal agencies. Because the federal agencies, they have a lot of teeth, and they can make a lot of progress on a case we couldn't otherwise make. And as an example, in FY17, we, 32 or 33, I'm not going to misspoke if I say 32, we've had 32 defendants transferred to federal court. And that's unprecedented for, for our agency, for the task force, and so for what we've done. And you do that by building rapport and by building relationships and getting those agencies to adopt your cases. So, and that is a big thing for our community, a really, really big thing. You know, we talk about manpower and staffing. Well, to leverage that or to augment that, we have to have these partnerships. And the POP unit has some time to make some of those phone calls and to spend some time as, as well as the task force. So there's, you can see a list there that I put down, and they've really did a wonderful job at doing that. So we'll talk about some of their statistics. So we, we actually got this thing going in March, so it's one-quarter short compared to 17. So the felony arrests from March through December of 16, they had 19. The felony warrant arrests were 18. So we break that down into onsite arrests versus warrant arrests. I mean, if you have a warrant for somebody, and you know they're wanted, and you gather intelligence information, you go out and arrest them, that's a warrant arrest versus you're assigned to this high-crime area, here's what we think's going on, and you make a felony arrest, then that's, that's the first column. They seized eight pistols, one shotgun, no rifles, and two knives. And then, so let's leap forward now. Now the program's fully in place, we got, we got things going the way, the direction we want it to go. And so they made 37 felony arrests, directed policing. They made 37 warrant arrests, felony warrant arrests.
We appreciate that.
23 pistols seized, four shotguns, five rifles, and five knives. And every one of those are weapons that were illegally possessed. And when you talk about violent crime, it's pretty difficult to commit violent crime without some type of weapon. And so you really focus your efforts on that and try to not only reduce the people with the weapons, but reduce the overall number of the weapons as you're going about it. So, I mean, kudos to them. I can't say enough good things about Ryan Smith and Officer Pope.
Yeah, yeah.
But there's your, there's your federal dollars at work right there. So community support, I mean, Major Grimshaw's, for lack of a better word, knocked it out of the park with community engagement. I mean, he's amazing when it comes to that. And the rapport that he has built, I mean, a lot of these on the list really are contributed to, to Major Grimshaw and his efforts. So, I mean, again, I'm not going to stand here and read it to you, you can read it. But, I mean, the department as a whole is involved in all these programs, but, I mean, for the most part, he's kind of helped or been a part to, to launch these programs as well. I mean, for the very most part, all of these things that are on here, other than maybe one or two or, or things that, that I, that we got to give him credit for in the department, untold hours of volunteerism. I mean, when we have events like this and we ask officers to come, they're doing that on their own free will.
They come. I'll tell you, that's one of the, that's one of the biggest things I am so proud of, the Burlington Police Department and the Fire Department. Man, you guys, you guys show up. You know, when there's something going on, you guys show up, you come hard, heavy, and that I'm just, I'm just so proud of. You know, every time we have an event, every time there's something, I know I can count on you guys to be there and show up, and that does go a long way. That does go a long way.
Thank you. So cost to consider, and this is going to get back to our five-year CIP plan. And once we get to talking about the staffing report, and where, where we want to go with that or don't want to go with that, or whatever those decisions are made, but as you follow along here, and you start to follow that staffing plan, I mean, kind of here's where you start to end up with your annual capital cost versus this number over here. So I just want everybody to really be aware that when we go through this process, I mean, personnel is our biggest expense. It doesn't go away, but capital costs are going to rise as well, but it's just as important. And the one thing I really want to point out that's not part of the staffing proposal, but it's something we need to talk about at the end of the staffing proposal, we're going to have to seriously consider another part-time clerical staff. I mean, without that support staff, we dictate 100% of our reports. In other words, they come in and they talk into this dictation machine, and then a clerical personnel types that, writes that, makes the copies, distributes the copies, get it where it needs to be. And the three we have are full-time, and they're, they're full-time to say the least. I mean, they're going at it constantly. When you respond to 37,000 calls for service, not all of those require a report, but a lot of them do. And so, again, that's not something we're asking for right now, but it's something that you really need to be aware of as we move forward. As you increase patrolmen, there's a lot of associated costs. And when we get to the staffing proposal, it's, a lot of those costs are all broke down there as well. I thought you had some. So in a summary, we helped us brief overview of the police department budget, giving you a better understanding of how your public dollars are spent. At the department, we take great pride in making Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. So questions, comments, before we move on to kind of the second phase? I know it's a ton of information. Feel free to email me, call me, whatever. I mean, as you get into the details of the budget, and be happy to, to talk... I mean, as, as you get into the details of the budget, and be happy to, to talk to you about that.
Something that we haven't talked about, Stephanie, is OpenGov filled out now? Is it uploaded? With the budget information? So, that's something that we don't have online yet, but, uh, OpenGov is something that we have on our website, and, or, I guess, on Thursday, can you make sure that we know what, when, when everything will be on there? But it is a tool that you can go through and, and look at all of the information. For example, from Chief's Department, you'll be able to break down and, and look at just the, the police department. Maybe we should do an overview of that process too on Thursday night, because we haven't done that. You can look at, break it down into what, what the personnel costs are. It'll, very easy to, very user-friendly ways to look at pieces of the information and get some.
Chart graphs, pies.
Now, developing graphs out of it is.
Exporting is a different story.
Not, not quite so easy, but, uh, we do need to get that out there and finished. We didn't have a complete budget document on my spreadsheet until last Wednesday or so. Waiting for Eric's final numbers and being able to get the CIP stuff done. So, we are a little bit behind. Just to do a brief intro, for new members of the council and people, members of the public who'd like to be able to go and use that tool.
Yeah, I haven't pulled up, it is pretty slick. It's got some neat graphs on it and all kinds of stuff, yeah.
Yeah, it's nice. Great program. This plan was put together last year, but it's been updated for this year. Some of the information's the same, but anything that needed updated, has been updated.
Did you get an extra one?
Well, I got one earlier today.
I got one.
Why, why do you have plenty, Chief?
I had a few left over today.
Let's stay away from that topic until.
Okay.
Yeah. So anyway, we, uh, last year, in, in meeting with a group from the chamber, and, and a lot of different people actually from the community, and talking about staffing, and if we could afford staffing, and if we could afford staffing, how, how would you use that staffing? So I got together with the staff, the Burlington Police Department, and we put together this, this three-year plan. And so, it's kind of a living document that's changed, and it's already changed, because we actually followed the plan last year and hired two additional officers. And kind of when we go through this, you'll see on the back sheet how that's kind of been updated. But it'll provide you with some background information on how many officers should the Burlington Police Department have. I mean, as you look at national statistics, calls for service, all those contributing factors. But before we get off the first page, and again, I'm not gonna take the time to, to read all this. I want you to take a careful look at that. Fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, the carrying weapons and the shots fired. And what's not on there is fourteen, but if, if we had room to leave fourteen on there, you'd have seen the blue and the red, just a little bit smaller, and how this thing was stair-stepping up from fifteen to sixteen. But now look at seventeen. And this would be almost like a direct correlation of what you saw with the POP unit statistics. This is what we wanted to see. We wanted to see that our carrying weapons charges were up, but our shots fired calls were down. I mean, as we look at data to compare, wh- what problem were we trying to attack with this? Well, it, it's not only gun violence, but it's these critical incidents that really affect your community down to the gut, or just clear inside here. And like I said earlier, it's hard to commit those kind of crimes at those kind of levels without some type of weapon. So, that's why we use this weapon as part of what we're trying to keep track of. And so what that means is, is those are weapons that were in possession illegally, unlawfully, however you wanna say it. Whether that was through traffic stops, or through search warrants, or through us using legal means to take illegal weapons off the street. And those shots fired calls in twenty-fourteen, which isn't on here, we started changing the actual call type. In other words, if a call came in as a shots fired, you proved to me that there were shots fired. And then we'll put that in there as shots fired. Because our records management system, if that call goes in there as shots fired, and it's never changed, and it was fireworks, how do you ever really know? And so I said, bring me some evidence that there were shots fired, and we'll leave that actual call type as shots fired, so we can completely compare apples to apples. So, when it comes to shots fired, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen is very, very comparable data, because the same criteria was used to gather that information.
What about, uh, just, just real quick, you've got, um, we're responding over three hundred calls for service with other mental health population, growing trends of violent crime, gun violence, distribution of ICE, heroin, and crack cocaine. What's the, uh, what's the driving, uh, what's, what's going on with the drugs here? Is there, is there something that's starting to?
Yeah, no, thanks for asking, and we'll touch on that twofold. First and foremost are those mental health calls. Those calls just continue to increase. I mean, that's a crisis in this state. It's at a crisis. I mean, we got people that are out there that need help, that aren't getting the services for that kind of help. And so the police department gets in the middle of it. And Major Grimshaw, right now, currently is working on a program. We got our officers trained that are gonna start training our others, but it's gonna be a full-fledged CIT program, crisis intervention training, where we have officers that are specifically trained to handle people in a crisis, a mental health crisis. So, I mean, that's gonna be hugely beneficial. There's all kinds of technology they're using nowadays. If we can get the support staff behind this, like, let's say, here's an example. A local psychiatrist, psychologist gets on board. There are actually, in other departments, they're using FaceTime as a tool. This person's in this crisis, we got a mess, and we can actually start to FaceTime this information, so they can have real-world service right here, right now. And these officers that are currently trained in this, it's, it's amazing, it's unbelievable what they're doing. So, I mean, we are trying to stay out front of that as best we can. But it, it truly is starting to overwhelm our organization. It's a lot, it is a lot of calls. And I can get you another update on that in the annual report, but, I mean, in seventeen, before the year was even over, we had responded to over three hundred of those types of medical calls. So, I mean, and it's, it's people that are in crisis, it's people that need help. They don't need to go to jail, they need help.
They need help.
But sometimes it leaves us with no option. So the drugs, we'll switch over to that real quick. ICE is the purest form of methamphetamine, and it still dominates our drug market by far. Crack cocaine did, but it doesn't anymore. Crack cocaine, you can find it, but you gotta go look for it. ICE is prevalent. And the difference between.
Are they, is that, are they shooting up?
You can smoke it, you can shoot it, there's all different kinds of ways you can ingest it.
These people are staying up for days at a time.
Yeah, and that's just it, that's what's happened with ICE. I mean, it's a ten, eight, ten, twelve-hour high versus a twenty-minute high for the same price, about a hundred and ten dollars a gram. And we haven't seen that price fluctuate a lot, and it's a supply and demand market. So, when we see that price kind of staying at the lower ends of the scale, it's not necessarily a good thing. That tells me that the supply is out there.
What about, what about heroin, there's some concerns about that?
And it's gonna have to be something that's gonna be discussed. We've been very fortunate in the community, we've held it at bay to this point. But you look at communities surrounding us, especially the communities that are a little bit bigger, specifically Cedar Rapids, Quad Cities, bad shape, heroin's a bad deal. They lace it with fentanyl and what they call car fentanyl, which is actually.
Killing people, man.
It is. It's actually a, it's a, what I wanna say, a tranquilizer for elephants is the best way I can describe it to you. Where, just a minute little bit. And so then, that becomes a problem for us as officers as well. I mean, you can absorb it through your skin. So we have, you know, policies in place now, if it's a white powdery substance, you're not testing it, you're not gonna expose yourself straight to the lab. We used to test every white powder substance we came across, so. But if you wanna look at heroin at an epidemic level, look at the, like Ohio for an example, like southwest of Dayton, Ohio. It, it's unbelievable what's going on in some of these communities.
ICE is, I mean, meth is just, uh, something else, right here.
Yeah, and, and meth has changed a lot. The demographic of methamphetamine was, was made in super labs, they called them, in California for years and years and years. And it was pretty much run by the cartels out of the southwest. And it was all manufactured. And then you started hearing about all these labs popping up, methamphetamine labs, you remember that?
Oh yeah, traveling labs even.
Yep. So we went through that whole thing until we got down to what they called the shake-and-bake method, where they could actually, like you said, these traveling labs, they could take a two-liter pop bottle and make methamphetamine without getting into the details. Well, that's all completely changed, completely changed. I'm not saying we don't come across one, but it's, it's, it's once in a blue moon now, for lack of a better word. It is all manufactured again. And what they're doing is they don't take and put hydrochloride with it to turn it to powder, and you get the, the hard form of methamphetamine, or what they call ICE. And it's just like crack, it's the purest form of methamphetamine you can get, so. And it's prevalent. It, it's not just in this community, it's prevalent all over the Midwest, the South. Lots of dope coming up out of Texas, Southern Texas, California, lots.
Back to the topic of heroin, is the really, the, the true root of trying to deter that, deterring trafficking? I mean, is that what it comes back to? It's just limit the trafficking? Because it's obviously not being produced here, because it's an opium derivative, so is, is that the, the only way to really try and?
Yeah, I think what a lot of communities have tried without much success so far, but in the prevention, you know, and you're really seeing the federal government do it now, because most people start out on a lawful opioid, such as hydrocodone, Vicodin, whatever it means, it's, it's in your medicine cabinet, because you had a broken arm or whatever, and you didn't get rid of it. And whether it's adults or kids, whatever, start taking a few of those, and it feels pretty good. Well, pretty soon, the prescription runs out, and they can't get any more, then they turn to heroin. I mean, almost every time, that that's, that's what's happening. So, how do you prevent that? I mean, that's the absolute million-dollar question.
I'm just, well, that just, to me, that, that just blows me away, though. Again, you jump from a Vicodin to a heroin?
Yeah, absolutely.
Who's making those jumps, kids?
Well, I don't know so much kids, we're not seeing that, but I'd say that college age and older. And then really, my age, it's, it's, it's very prevalent. Yeah, well, it's an opioid, and the only other place they can get that same feeling, they're gonna have to resort, or resort to heroin. And it all comes out of, they call it the golden triangle, it all comes out of Asia, that's where all the opium's grown. Opium poppies, you can kind of research and see how it's all made.
It's considerably cheaper than, than true cocaine, correct, right?
Yeah, I'd say right now, it's about the same price. It really is. Now, in the day, it was, but now, nah, it's, it's all of it's running about that hundred, hundred and ten dollars a gram. So yeah, that's kind of.
You're bringing me down, let's, let's.
Hey, you ask. So, anyway, well, if you kind of turn to, I don't know if I even marked these, yeah, page three. And the thing I wanna point out there is, if we can get to the point of where you can start to get seven officers on a squad, we could start to at least have the discussion of an overlap shift. And that's why you saw the POP unit on that flexible shift. We're putting them in the department at the hours, and you can clearly see on this chart where we're really, really busy. And so, if we had a chance to have an overlap shift, obviously, you can see where we could really be most effective. And I just wanted to point that out to you, that, that different times of the day, we're a lot busier than other times of the day. And that, that chart stays pretty consistent, year after year after year after year.
It's right of change, isn't it?
Yeah, yep. And again, page four is part of putting this together. Let's see what they do nationally. I mean, how many, at the national level, how many officers are you supposed to have per thousand residents? And so we put that together, and the last consensus that I could find, I think there could be another one out there right now, but we were right around that twenty-five, seven for here in Burlington, give or take a few. So that kind of puts us right between the one-point-eight and two-point-oh, and so if we split the difference and say one-point-nine, when you slide over to twenty-five to forty-nine thousand people, it would come out, the, the math comes out to forty-nine officers. And currently, we have forty-five. So now, if you go to page five, in FY seventeen and FY eighteen, we're, we're exactly on track here. We have done exactly what we would say we would do in those two years, other than it's gonna be Wednesday that that guy's reassigned to CID. So those positions have been replaced, and those additional officers have been hired. The, one of those two officers is just now in the FTO program. But the other officers are actually out on the streets, and they have been for just a handful of days, a couple weeks at the most, or even a week. So we still have one of those two officers in the program. So we haven't seen the full impact of the forty-five, but we're getting pretty close. We're getting right there where we need to be. So, on this proposal, or this hiring schedule, we are proposing that we add two more in FY nineteen. And again, I wanna make it very clear, the budget you just saw is balanced for forty-five, not forty-seven. I don't want there to be any confusion about that. It's balanced at forty-five, not forty-seven. This is a proposal, and when we put this proposal together, we did our absolute best to consider financial responsibility as well. And then you can see in FY twenty, what the plan would be to add two more, when we'd have to replace a couple, but that's really not the important part, other than you have to hire four people instead of two. So then, if you could flip to page six, and these numbers were, were averaged, but it's gonna get you really close to what it's gonna cost you over the course of this three-year period, not only in the cost of officers, but in the cost of that capital equipment that we talked about. And then at the bottom there, you'll see a total of what this three-year staffing plan would cost you for those three years. But obviously, those personnel are gonna be here, and so it'll just be an ongoing expense. And then the last page, page seven, I, I thought it'd be important to break it down to you, just, just to let you know how much it costs us to hire policemen. And if you look at that, that's, that's what it costs. Keep in mind, and I highlighted it in red, that you need a car for two officers, not one. But it gives you a really good idea of what we pay for, for testing services, uh, the academy, the clothing, the duty equipment that they need. So that's kind of the three-year staffing plan. So those numbers, I mean, to add personnel, the budget you saw for, for FY nineteen for the capital, if you added to this year, I mean, this, these capital costs would then come in FY twenty, if that makes sense. We wouldn't have to add additional capital costs, other than the hiring expense, what's on that last sheet.
Appreciate that.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Chief, do you feel like you're, the most officers your department could absorb in any one year or two?
You know, we can, we've absorbed three or four, but that's really difficult. I mean, two or three is, is better, especially as we're trying to put on these reserves. I mean, we have trained up to four, but that's extremely stressful, especially kind of what we're going through right now. I mean, we're just in this phase that we're hiring and training, it seems like, constantly, which is a good thing, but it, it is a stress on the department. But could, could we train four? Yeah. Would we prefer to train four? No.
Would you prefer to train three?
Yeah, three, three, we can handle three, two's better, but we can handle three. I know that's an awful lot to absorb, but I tried to break it down into completely separate things. I don't want there to be any confusion about what's, what's been presented as a balanced budget versus an addition to that budget.
Which is appreciated, which is appreciated, and you did do that. Do you guys have any, uh, questions? Everybody's good?
Excellent presentation.
Real thorough, Chief, thanks.
Thank you.
Very well done. It's almost like you got thirty years of experience or something.
He's used to this, he can't leave. He's used to it.
Mama said he's gone. Mama said he's gone.
Thanks, Eric. Appreciate it.
Point guard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
The only thing I would mention, as you think through what your thoughts are on PD staffing, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand works out to, for, for each of those years. You can think of, uh, what it means in terms of a levy to bring on two officers and the cost for training and equipping, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. It's about a thirty-four-and-a-half cent levy is the equivalent.
How much was that again, Jim?
Thirty-four-and-a-half cent levy. Part of that discussion too, and I, I know I mentioned it last, last week, when you think about, and you think about it, you get to think about not just the one year, but what does this look like as you move forward? And I, I mean, the staffing proposal that was brought forward to the council last year was something the council was very interested in and very concerned about wanting to try to make it happen if possible. That being said, you're another council, and it's a different year, and I don't know where the group is at and how you're wanting to proceed or, or try to make something happen. To bring on two, again, to bring on two additional, you're going to have to find a cut somewhere or raise some, some equivalent revenue to make that happen. Again, that's the tax impact it would be if that's the, the way that you were going to go, and that is our primary funding source, unfortunately.
And we also need to, to keep in mind that in the next two years or two and a half, we're going to absorb the other eighty-four thousand dollars from the POP grant that isn't going to be there, correct?
Well, we're be absorbing that, and you have to have a discussion as we move into the next couple of weeks through the discussions of fire department.
And safer grant.
The safer grant goes off.
But just on the Police Department at this point, we're going to have an additional eighty-four thousand a year to absorb.
It's going to be a little bit higher than that.
Yeah, mostly it's going to be in the...
I mean, we, we brought in eighty-five thousand this year, next year, it's sixty-four, I think, is what we have in the budget. But regardless, there's...
Yeah, that eighty-three was averaged out. We're... Okay, okay. Sorry, that can probably confuse you. No, that's fine.
The, the following year, I mean, it's, we're just have, we have higher staffing and...
More money.
It takes more money. And part of the problem is, is you can't just look at the lost, what you're losing for money and what you got to make up for, for that gap, but your costs continue to go up, and personnel costs, by and large, I mean, they're the driving piece of what our budget is, and they go up faster than what our main funding source, which is property taxes, go up.
Health insurance and...
Health insurance and...
Retirement.
Higher, health insurance goes up about five percent a year, and as you looked at the numbers that Chief presented, and it showed, I can't remember, it was a little over three and a half, maybe, three and a half percent increase on the personnel costs. So, if you think of it being personnel costs, the salary side is two and a quarter percent increase, the, the rest of that is benefits. Pension costs went up this year. The following year, there's, they're anticipated to go down a tad bit, but then the following, the year after that, they're anticipated to go up. Again, that kind of depends on what happens with fund performance, which has been very good, so that'll help that, but I mean, those are some what-ifs that you don't know. Long-term, uh, over the course of the next five years, we have a, a budget that is balanced for the current year, as is. Existing staffing in all departments moving forward, next year was a, it's about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit. I'm, I can't do four years' worth of numbers off of memory. I used to be able to.
You're getting old, Jim. It's all right, we understand.
I'm almost as old as you are.
Man, I'll tell you what, that must have been hard for you to squeeze that lie out of your mouth.
Okay, so, we're about two-hundred thousand off next year, the following year, closer to four-fifty, then eight-hundred thousand off.
And that's because of the safer grant.
And then, nine-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand off. And a big portion of that is the grant funding, but the other piece is, is that all other things being equal, our, our primary funding source, property taxes, don't, on average, go up as much as what employee and benefits costs go up. And if you go to try to make something happen with this staffing plan, if those are numbers that approach, well, getting, are getting close to a million dollars, you add on the four more positions over this, the following couple of years, that figures actually by that fifth year, more like a million and a half.
He's a buzzkill. I told you, he's the bearer of bad news, Linda. You didn't want to believe me, but I, I knew you'd see the light eventually, at least any time.
So, you got a challenge as you move forward. You can make, again, you can make this year work with no staffing changes, but if you want to do and, and proceed with the plan you have here, you have some major decisions about what you're going to do, and you got to know that over the course of the next few years, you have some significant decisions to make about how you want to proceed. It's certainly a good time to start talking about what your thoughts are on, on staffing. I mean, you don't have to make a, a decision tonight, but one thing that you're going to discover, we're at January fifteen, and by February nine, we have to be done. You have less than four weeks to, to finalize this process, and it, the time runs out quickly.
Anybody want to say anything?
I, I would say that, I mean, it's really important to have an idea as to where the other departments are going to be sitting before we start to make any kind of valid arguments for one way or another, because I'm sure the other departments are going to come to us as well and say staffing is, is our primary need at this point. So, those are some things that we're going to have to take into consideration. I will tell you that just coming off of the campaign, if you go talk to anybody in the community, there are two things that they're going to tell you right off the bat. We need more police, we need, we need, because that's been a prevalent issue for most people in our community, and taxes are high. So, and those two things work against one another. So, at the end of the day, we've either got to sit down and prioritize this, or we've got to try and come up with more creative funding sources. And those are some things that I think we should probably look into over the next couple of weeks. Whether or not they, they work, I don't know, but I, I definitely don't want to become the community that people don't want to move to because we've got more shots fired calls or heroin has become the more prevalent drug of trade because we weren't aggressive with it, uh, on the front end. So, those are some things, but we got to be okay.
I just want to, I want to say this again. You know, I love you, Big Chief, but even if we hired twenty new officers, I just, people just need to understand this, it's not going to stop crime.
Right.
If we had, if we had fifty new officers, it's not going to stop crime. I'm, I don't want to take away from what the Chief said about, about the staff that he feels like they need. I just think people need to be mindful as we move forward that if we had a police on every block, it's not going to stop crime. So, people need to understand that. They just need to, to deal with the fact that we live in two thousand and eighteen. You know, they'd say, well, it's a Burlington problem. It's not a Burlington problem, it's a societal problem. You can't, you can't move away from this. They've got, they've got police officers in Beverly Hills, don't they? They got police officers in Beverly Hills. So, I mean, do the math, my friends. So, so I'm just saying, we don't want to make any decisions. Budget time for people to get excited. I just want to remind everybody that we do live in a good community, and I think we just saw that the police are doing their job, they're working hard, and we want to continue to support them. We don't want to make any crazy decisions, but I, I just think moving forward, I, uh, I'm stepping on the brakes. I'm stepping on the brakes, and it's not, I, I just feel like now's the time that we have to step on the brakes. I meant to have, tonight before we got started, I was going to lay out all of the things, all the accomplishments that the, the council through, through Jim, that we got to achieve. And we're really, we were on the mountaintop. We really were. And it was a long stretch, but everybody has to come down from the mountain. Moses had to come down from the mountain. You know what I'm saying? You can't stay on there. And I'm telling you, the, our, our financial situation right now, we need to look at reality, and I think now's the time that we step away and, and realize the facts that we have to come down from the mountain and, and slow down a little bit. That's just my perspective on it, and I just want to tell you, moving forward, I want to move forward with a balanced budget. That's where I am now, and that's where I'll be at the end of this process. I'm just letting you guys know. Anybody else have anything they want to say? Okay. Jimmy?
That's it. We'll have a budget hearing again on Thursday at three-thirty. CIP, again, I think that I, if we can get you to, just to do a review of how Open Gov works and Chief Trexel, you're up, I think, and Rhonda. So, that should be done in fifty minutes, right?
Man's good times. We'll, we'll be eating pizza in no time. All right. Okay. Well, that's it, then. We thank you for sitting with us. Good night, everybody.
Anyone get any complaints?